Should I go ahead? It just still says County of Humboldt there. All right, everybody. Welcome to the March 4 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And as usual, in accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the county planning commission meeting will be held virtually. Go on the county website. You can get instructions to join us either on the, by computer or by phone. And I will now call this meeting to order. And please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands before me unafraid, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please, Laura?
Alan Bonjio.
Here.
Thomas Mulder.
President.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Here.
Brian Mitchell.
I'm back.
Welcome back, Brian.
Yay. Welcome back.
Melanie McGaver.
Here.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. All right. So it looks like we have a quorum. We will have a meeting. Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We do not have any modifications to the agenda. I do want to point out that we did forward two things to you tonight. Apologize for the late arrival of those, but we did just receive those this afternoon.
Thank you. So next is item D, which is public comment. And this is the time when you can address the commission on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So if anybody in the public, let me get to it, would like to address the commission, now is your opportunity. I see a lot of public, but I don't see any hands up. Give them another second. Anybody want to address the commission? All right. See in no hands. I will close the public comments. And we will move on to the consent agenda. And I'll go through the consent agenda like we always do. And if we, anybody on the commission or in the public wants to pull an item, please raise your hand and we'll pull that item. So the first item on consent is Sierra Mountain Collective LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Denzmore area. Is there anybody who would like this item pulled? See in none. I will leave this on consent. Item number two, which is I&amp;I Ranch LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Phillipsville area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled?
I do. I believe that's the one that we got, the Late Fish and Wildlife letter.
I'm not sure. I didn't see it yet, so.
If, I'm fairly sure it is this one. So I'd like to have a discussion of it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Noah. So item number two will be pulled. Item number three is the Crossland Management LLC Conditional Use Permit at Gordon Road, Neeland Lone Star Junction area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this one pulled? See in no hands. I will leave that on consent.
Mr. Chairman, this is Brian. I have, I just have a question about this one. So I don't know if you want to pull it per se, or if I can just ask the question.
Director, would you like to take a question on it? If. I would love to. It's someone that got disconnected. Oh. The director's lost his contact. Why don't we just pull it at this point when he should have things working by then?
That's fine. And I'll make it quick. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we're gonna, that's item number three, right? The next one is item number four, Humboldt Medicinals Cooperative Incorporated in the Neeland area. Does anybody wish to have this one pulled? See in none. We'll leave that on. And that concludes our items on the consent agenda. So I would ask that we, if somebody would like to make the motion to accept items number one, item number, and item number four, I believe, on the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second. You have a motion and a second. I think Noah beat you, Melanie, so we'll give it to him this time. And I'll have a roll call vote on that.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Melanie McGaver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. So that will take us to items that were pulled from consent. And the first one will be item number two, which is the I&amp;I Ranch LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Phillipsville area. And I'd ask for a staff report. Yes. Can I share my screen? Oh, there it goes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christopher Alberts. And tonight I'll be presenting the I&amp;I Ranch Conditional Use Permit. The proposed project is to authorize the continued cultivation of 31,920 square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation. Whereas 23,520 square feet will be light deprivation and 8,400 square feet will be full sun outdoor. Processing such as drying, tearing, and trimming will occur onsite within an existing 2,400 square foot wood building. There will be six employees working onsite and power will be provided by solar with a backup generator. The project is located in the Phillipsville area. The parcel is accessed via private driveway from Direville Loop Road. This here is a copy of the applicant's proposed site map. The areas highlighted in green show where the light deprivation cultivation will be occurring. The areas highlighted in yellow identify where the outdoor full sun cultivation will be occurring. Purple is highlighted, or propagation is highlighted in purple. And the processing building is located on the northern end of the parcel. There are no mapped habitat for any threatened or endangered species of concern located on the parcel. However, there is a northern spotted owl activity center located approximately 0.74 miles east from the project site. There is also marble mulet habitat located approximately 1.51 miles east from the project site as well. Noise and light contamination measures are required as a condition of approval. The water source for the project is a onsite permitted well and a proposed 550,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond. The applicant is also proposing to supplement the rainwater catchment pond for the point of diversion from unnamed spring. The applicant has submitted a draft lake and stream bed notification from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife that indicates for this use. The applicant anticipates 550,000 gallons of water will be required for irrigation annually. There's a total of 567,500 gallons of water storage onsite or proposed to be onsite. Saff determined that the well being proposed for irrigation is not hydrologically connected to any surface water based on the evidence found within the applicant's well completion log. According to the well completion log, the well is approximately, the well is 160 feet in depth and penetrates through clay, serpentine, and sandstone. The well is also approximately 2,107 feet in elevation and the nearest map surface water is approximately 0.20 miles south from the well. The project was referred to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife on July 11, 2018. The project received comments from the department on July 17, 2019, which should be attached to the staff report. The project received additional comments today on March 4, 2021, requesting that we add, the project adds the additional conditions of approval. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife are requesting that prior to construction of the proposed 550,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond, the applicant has a qualified professional conduct a wetland delineation as well as a botanical survey for the project. The department is also requesting that remediation work is necessary, that the applicant shall amend and apply for a separate notification with CDFW. These are the comments that you guys have received last minute today. Saff recommends that the planning commission find the project assistant with the mitigating negative declaration adopted for the CM and LUO, make all the required findings for the approval of the conditional use permit, and to adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation.
Sorry, I was muted. Does anybody have any questions for Christopher before we?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I did not receive this letter. So can someone please send it to me?
Is that something you could do, Director? The director's on it.
And me. I did not get it.
They were sent out, he says, at 4:22 today. So I didn't see it myself. I, but at this point, they should get in sooner if we're expected to have had them before the meeting. So that's just how it is. Go ahead, Mike.
So one other tag on that is I wanted to know why it was so late in coming in after it had been out already and stuff. So just was wondering why.
And you answer that, Christopher, or since John is busy sending it?
I could, I could try to take a stab at that. I, I guess we don't know. You know, that would be a question for CDFW. As Christopher mentioned, we did refer this previously and received referral comments. In reading the comments that they sent, which were just before 4 o'clock PM today, it looks like they've raised some questions that relate to the Lake or Stream Bed Alteration Agreement notification and are seeking to have the planning commission add some conditions that they feel that they may not be able to add into the Lake or Stream Bed Alteration Agreement. That's, we just, and we haven't had much time to respond or review that either. So apologies for that.
Yeah. So the, the letter is a kind of a string of emails that were sent, that started going back and forth within CDFW. And then were given to us today asking for those conditions. He's frozen up.
They're having some problems with Wi-Fi's. I apologize. I don't, they're working on it. I think we're going to need to reach out to Fish and Game and ask them to be more proactive on getting us this information early because they're usually the one that we're most concerned with, it seems like, in a lot of these projects. And they seem to come in and trickle in at the end. They have that many concerns, they should be able to get them to us.
Is there a representative here at the meeting?
I don't believe so. I haven't seen anybody that I recognize a name. And there could be. I just don't see anybody. Mike, I, I'll look again in case any of them have changed while they're working on the Wi-Fi. None of the names are the ones that we usually have at our meetings, so. You just, I didn't, couldn't hear you, Mike.
It looks like Thomas and Noah have some comments on it.
Okay, well, all right. Go ahead, Thomas. Go ahead, Thomas.
So I, this is, this is a question for staff. I did not realize it till I actually just land glided this partial. I don't know if I need to recuse myself or not. In 2016, before my brother-in-law was my brother-in-law, worked at this property for this individual and was shot during a robbery. He lived, but almost died during it. So I don't know. Personally, I can weigh the facts just fine. I did not make any financial gain off of it. But I just need to throw that out there as an ex parte disclosure. And if I need to recuse myself, I need to recuse myself.
I'll let the director answer if he, if he can come up. But I think you're okay. It doesn't appear to me to be a conflict there.
Yeah, I think I would prefer to defer to Natalie Duke to weigh in on that.
Thank you. I don't see any financial conflict, which would be the form of conflict under the rules. You're saying that you don't have, you can act without. Based on the information that you presented, it doesn't appear that there's a straightforward conflict here.
I have zero bias. I just, I realized it once it was being presented. So I was like, oh, I need to disclose this.
Always the right thing to do, but I don't see that there being a problem there, Thomas. See that?
Okay, that's it for now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things I wanted to finish saying that I, is problematic about the CDFW comments is that they're arguing that there are wetlands on the site. And if there are wetlands on the site that would be damaged by the proposed project, it's not appropriate to put a condition on there to do a wetland survey because that may change the nature of the project, which the commission wouldn't have the ability to weigh. And so there was a biological reconnaissance provided by the applicant. And really what the commission is being asked to do in this particular case is weigh the information that's been provided by the applicant in the comments from CDFW. If the commission's concerned that there are wetlands concerned enough to have that condition, we would recommend that you continue this item to allow the wetland delineation to be done prior to taking action on the project.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Noah, you got your hand up?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate Director Ford addressing my main concern here. In this email chain, which I know most of you did not see, first of all, I just want to read one short quote from the email. It says, you know, basically says, "Get this, can you ask the county to add protocol wetland delineation and protocol botanical survey with subsequent CDFW coordination as conditions of approval? The county planner, Christopher Alberts, might be able to get those conditions added quickly." I think we'd, and then this is the sentence I want to underscore. "I think we'd much rather see complete bio reports prior to project approval, but getting these conditions added is better than nothing at this point. However, in light of Director Ford's comments, I think, I think there is good reason to continue this because I also see somewhere down in this email chain, the consultant has tentatively scheduled a wetland delineation for March 23, 2021. So that's already calendared out for several weeks. And finally, I want to read one other line which, which caught my attention. I didn't have time to do more than skim this, but I did have a chance to skim it, which many of you did not. And there's another paragraph in the body of this letter, which is forwarded along with the email chain. And so it's not just the email chain itself here. And I quote, "CDFW did not fully evaluate hydraulic connection of the wells to surface water, nor was a hydrogeologic evaluation prepared by a licensed geologist provided for CDFW review. Based on the available resources and the site inspection, the wells may be hydraulically connected to streams and/or springs and shall be evaluated for potential impacts from commercial cannabis irrigation, da, 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 da. In particular, CDFW site inspection revealed that well number one is located approximate to the spring and water levels recorded in the well log 25 feet below ground are at similar elevation." So I don't need to keep quoting, but he, there's a suggestion here, which I wanted to directly bring to the staff, that, that the determination that I take it staff made that this well is hydraulically not connected to surface waters is being called into question by DFW. So it's, it's not just a matter of wetland delineation. It's also a matter of, of the water source and the rules that apply to that. So with that said, and I realize this is just coming in to you guys a couple hours ago, but I wanted to ask Christopher or Director Ford to respond to that point about the questioning the hydraulic connection of the well.
So this is one of the things where. CDFW is changing the rules of engagement right now. And traditionally hydrologic connectivity related to withdraw of surface water. And surface water also includes the underflow of a lake or a stream or creek. So what CDFW now is changing their understanding of hydrologic connectivity to is anything below the ground could be connected at some point to a stream or a creek and, and to underflow. And, and that is not what our ordinance regulates. Our ordinance talks about diversionary water sources. And diversionary water sources is water that comes out of surface water, which by extension is the underflow of the creek. And so there, they are asking to redefine what hydrologic connectivity is. That should be very clear in terms of the commission's understanding about what's being requested of you right now.
If I could just add on to that through the chair, the, my understanding also from CDFW is that they really want to see a hydrogeologist making these calls in, in, in fact, most cases. And so again, as Planner Christopher Alberts had mentioned, you know, we did review the well log, which is attached to the staff report here on, starting on page 37. And of particular importance to us in making this determination that we did not think it was hydrologically connected is that the well is blanked, which means it's, it's not able to draw water anywhere between 0 and 250 feet below the surface. So it's only drawing water at 250 feet below the surface. The, and looking here to see the type of material, I should say the soil type, I'm actually not seeing that in this well log. I think maybe if Chris has, has that information, he might share it. But again, I think, you know, looking at this, it's, it's only drawing water from 250 feet below the surface, nothing above that. And that is again on page 37 of your staff report.
All right. Thank you, Cliff and Christopher, for putting that back up. Any other questions for staff while we have them here before I open this up for public comment? So see in none. Oh, wait. Sorry about that. Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to state that because I didn't receive the letter until now and because the wetland delineation is scheduled for later this month, I'd really appreciate having the opportunity to read that wetland delineation before being expected to cast a vote, as well as give our staff some time to formally respond to the change in the manner which CDFW is looking at hydrological connectivity.
Sorry. Thomas, you're up. Thomas, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, my computer is a little delayed. I just, I have a couple concerns about this wetland delineation. I think it, personally, I feel it'd be easier to have that information in front of us before making a decision. I, outside knowledge, I've seen it could be detrimental for activities to take place in potential wetlands before they're actually identified. So if, if they're, to worry about that potential, it'd be nice just to have a protocol level report, which I just learned recently, the difference between an assessment and a protocol level assessment. And the last question is, I did turn to page 37 on this.
Whatever.
Well, completion report. And I'm actually confused about it. I've never ever seen a well. I've, I've looked at a handful of well that's blanked all the way down to the depth of the actual surface. Usually there's a 100 feet of screen. So I'm, I only, I see there's only bentonite in the first 20 feet as far as sealing the well. So what, was there screen gravel from 250 feet all the way up to 20 feet? Because then the hydrologic connectivity argument may be relevant. And that's it.
Any other questions? Could I ask Christopher to minimize his screen or go back to, to the? He's not? For some reason, I'm, I'm not showing. Oh, there we go. I don't know. I guess it was me.
What, do I need to do?
Sorry about that. No, you're, you're fine. It was technical problems on my end. Okay. So is there any other panelists that have questions for staff at this point? Not seeing any, I'm going to open this up for public comment and then we'll bring it back to decide if we're going to continue this or act on it. Okay. So the first public caller is Holly Hall. Go ahead, Holly.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your service to our community. I appreciate it. I have been working with the applicant to coordinate his project since the very beginning of 1.0. And I first would like to say that we have been working with CDFW for multiple years in reaching an agreement. And I think it's unprofessional to call the day before and send letters, you know, the evening, an hour or two before the meeting. And I find it to be a bit of a bullying tactic when we, which is unfortunate since we have a very clear regulatory process to follow to reach program solutions. And I guess that's just my expression of the frustration that I feel with this tactic. However, more to point is that there are two wells on site. I feel with this tactic. However, more to point is that there are two wells on site. The one, it sounds like the one that is being held up for concern by CDFW is one that is adjacent to the drinking water spring. And that one was capped at the time of the site visit with CDFW and continues to be kept. It is not used. And even for non-cannabis irrigation sources, the well that is used is shown on the site map and it's down by the cultivation area. And then if you look at section 5.2 of the bio reconnaissance report, the biologist states their findings for the first assessment of the wetlands that they did. So the second assessment that we are willing to do, and especially in support of placing the proposed ponds, says that only the areas surrounding cultivation and current project impacts in the parcel were surveyed. A preliminary scoping of the property using web soil survey and NWI GIS layers show that the soils on the property are not hydric. To have a wetland, we need three wetland features and we need, those three are hydric soils, wetland obligate plants, and water presence. And so hydric soils is one of those. And a wide survey says there are none. Existing project areas and proposed expansion areas do not contain any indications of hydrology, hydric soils, or hydrophytic vegetation that would support a wetland. An ephemeral depression was observed in a slight dip in the PO-1 area. All existing and proposed project sites are outside SMA setbacks. So we have a biologist opinion stated clearly in the bio reconnaissance report. And now at the last minute, we have a CDFW opinion going against that. And I just don't feel like there's a strong basis for, for trying to hold up the project at the last minute. And I would be happy to answer any other questions you might have. Thank you.
Is there any panelists that would like to ask her a question since she's a consultant?
Alan, quick one?
Go ahead, Noah. I was trying to, go ahead.
I didn't get my hand raised, just my, just my hand hand, but...
I know, I, I see you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And frankly, your engagement with this project gives me a lot of faith that they are getting really good professional help. But I just wanted to ask, in the email chain that I don't have in front of me, there was a reference to the consultant or a consultant is going to do a wetland delineation or a new wetland delineation. I forget what it said on March 23rd. Is, is that you? And it, I just wanted to know if there's anything more you can tell us about that.
Um, I, we have subcontracted with Mother Earth Engineering and their biologist on staff, Courtney, her last name is slipping in my mind right now, is the biologist that would be doing that with support from Mother Earth Engineering's team. Unfortunately, they were not able to join us tonight. And I guess, if I may add another observation, I would like to say that in 2012, there was a one acre flat graded in that area. And when we applied, the, we were approved to use that area, the project is not being built out to maximum historic impact. And the proposal to add a rainwater catchment pond is going to build resilience to this project. It'll allow for diversification of water use and alleviate use of the well, which I think is a model that we should move towards is building resilience through multiple water sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Holly before we move on to the public? Okay, seeing none. I am going to, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Thank you, Holly, by the way. I apologize. Is there any other public that would like to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to now close the public comment and bring it back to the commission to deliberate. So now we're back with the commission. All right. So does anybody have any question or further questions for staff or have any thoughts on what we should do with this project?
If I could.
Go ahead.
You know, one of the, the big mysteries here is, is why did CDFW submit a letter at this point? And as I was, have been thinking about it, one of the things that occurs to me is that the people doing the LSAA agreements are not the same people who review the information that we send out for circulation. And so as Ms. Hall just brought up, there was that biological reconnaissance that was prepared in 2019 that is attached to the file. And the people who are doing the LSAA agreement may not have had access to that. And so their internal deliberations may have been flying around without knowledge of this information that is in front of the commission tonight, which are facts that are on your record.
Thank you, Director. Now Noah, I saw your hand up a second ago. Or Noah, did you have your hand up or did you take it back?
Actually, I withdrew it.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Thomas, then. You were next.
So I just relooked at some of the conditions of approval on this project. And I don't know if it's because I was inside that wooden building back in 2016 to get my brother-in-law's belongings, but are we now allowing non-permitted or ag exempt type structure, structures for processing? Because I did not see any condition of approval for a commercial structure. And I, I may have missed it, but I do not see anything that talks about a permitted septic. So is that okay to have porta potties? And if there isn't a permitted septic, is it okay to have processing on site with, out of permitted septic? Because I know there's some people that would like to see that, but I just, I, I may have missed the conditions. So I apologize if I did.
Would one of the staff like to tackle that?
Chris, you, well, I'll just answer generally, that normally we require that all buildings used for cannabis be permitted. And that if a building's being used for processing, there will need to be a bathroom, and it will need to comply with accessibility standards. So there typically is a standard condition that we apply generically, all permits for existing cultivation to require that facilities that are going to be used, whether existing or new, receive building permits and it will be checked at that time.
Thank you. Mike Newman, I see.
I saw the condition for, through the chair, can I respond? I saw the condition about building permits, but I've, the project's last meeting, they had conditions that if they didn't have commercial buildings, they couldn't do onsite processing until they, so I just, that's where my confusion is coming from.
I, I, I think in circumstances where there is, are certain representations, it's a little bit different. So in that particular case, they were representing that they weren't going to be doing that, processing.
Thank you for the clarification. Mike Newman, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to double check on attachment one, page 16, item five, B5, B5. It says, adhered to CDFW referral comments received July 17th, 2019. And I just want to be sure that that is the attachment pages 44 through 46. Is that correct?
Yes, it should be those pages. They were attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Is this the time to make any comments, Alan, or just questions?
Whichever you like. It's back in the commission's hands. So anything you want to talk about?
So I detest the CDFW at the very latest moment sending in comments to deter something like this when it's already been through there. So I see, you know, as one of the requirements for the permit, that those CDFW requirements from 2019 be adhered to. So I'm prepared to put this project through.
Okay, Mike. Noah, I see you got your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just wanted to be clear that I, I did not have any concerns about this project before and until, or except for that CDFW letter. Look, I, I would rather get there in late than not at all. But that said, I really am concerned about, you know, kind of being, if there weren't other reasons to delay this project, I was ready to approve it. I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's likely that the, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we could, we could go ahead and approve this with the conditions attached, but we should be aware that if there's a wetland delineation coming up later this month, as Director Ford said, there's a possibility that could yield information that requires the project to be more significantly reconceived or the site plan to be redrawn. So I'm, I'm not really sure whether I think we should continue it or not. I'm open to persuasion either way. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Melanie, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I, I also find it pretty strange and bothersome that we received the letter today. And I'm just going to go on the assumption, I'm presuming that the people in charge of doing the analysis are, you know, the, that's what we should pay more attention to. Given that they are maybe different departments, it's still strange that they wouldn't communicate over the same project. But in terms of the, the water, I feel pretty comfortable with this project. I don't really like approving projects before everything's complete. So if there is a wetland delineation to be done, it would have made more sense, at least to me, for us to receive it afterwards. But perhaps if the director could be, give a bit more detail on what would happen in terms of that report with the conditions, you know, we, I, you know, we would give that, would it come back to us? Or, you know, depending on what it showed? Or, or would it just be handled internally?
Through the chair, that's a great question, Commissioner McFaur. The, the decision on that would really be made on how, the significance of the change. If it's a pretty minor change, it could be handled internally administratively. If it's a significant change, it would be something the commission would need to look at. I, one of the things that I struggle with, and I do not know the answer to this, because like you, I just received this information tonight, but why is it CDFW is requiring a wetland delineation? That's normally not their purview. This is something they're doing as part of an LSAA agreement. So normally the LSAA agreement is related to things that are being done within a stream channel. And, and so I, I am thoroughly confused.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that, that really reassures me. I feel okay with approving the project in that case, because I think that there's a strong chance that it may not even happen after they sort out what happened within the department. And if there was something to come out of it, I feel, at least in my opinion, it sounds like it would be something that could be handled internally. So that's, thank you for those answers. And that's my position on it, at least for now.
Thank you, Melanie. Brian, I see you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate my position that I'm uncomfortable moving forward without the information that will be available to us in a matter of days. And while I understand the frustration in the lateness of the letter we received, I think it's important that we treat state agencies as partners in the regulatory process. And while we are the lead agency, I don't think it's appropriate to try to flex on the state and say, we don't have to listen to you. So I think for the long-term benefit of our relationship, we should wait and get the wetland delineation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm, I see Thomas has his hand up. I'm going to chime in on this one I've been kind of holding off, but I think there's two points here. I think that the director made a kind of, or at least it's clear to me, that we could approve this project and put a condition there that says, you know, if the, the wetland delineation changes something, then that will go either come back to us, or if it's minor, it'll, it'll, you know, be changed internally to meet whatever it comes up with. The second issue for me, and the bigger one, is the ongoing problem we're having with getting the information at a timely manner from CDFW. I have a lot of respect for that agency. I probably take their input more importantly than most of the other agencies that give us input. But on the same note, they know what the timeframe is. They know when they're supposed to get it in. And if they can internally talk to each other, they need to fix their system. They've got a lot bigger personnel than what the county has, and they should be able to handle this. I, I just can't see how we can keep at the, and this isn't the first time this has happened. It almost appears that it's becoming a tactic of theirs to come in with a letter, hope at the end to hold up the process. And I think that we need, if nothing else, we're sending a message that if they can't get here on time, we need to still work on these projects. And at best, maybe we'll get the point that we should get them in on time. And maybe we should send a letter to them, you know, ask them, maybe the director could send something short and sweet to somebody at the right level that would tell them if they need to, if they want input, we get it in ahead of time. Everybody else seems to be able to do it. Why can't they? So I'll be quiet at that. Thomas, your hand was up.
Well, at first I was leaning towards uncomfortable without the assessment ahead of time. And then the language in which you spoke about a possible condition of approval. Also with giving me some history knowledge, as far as this isn't the first time this last minute thing came forward. I think with the appropriate added condition of approval, I could support this project moving forward after hearing you speak. So I'm glad you spoke before I did. And I think professional courtesy would be great amongst all these governmental agencies working together, because we're all here for the same cause. Let's just, you know, learn how to communicate with each other. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Melanie, I see you have, is that your new hand up? Or is that you just didn't take yours down?
That's from the old...
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Or is anybody ready to make a, a move on this one? Don't everybody go once. What are your guys' thoughts?
Trying to find the language here.
Okay. You'd all went to sleep.
No. And then I have to unmute myself too. So thank you. I'd like to move that we find the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigation negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana use ordinance, CMMLUO, as described by section 15164 of the state sequel guidelines, and make all the required findings for the approval of the conditional... state SEQUA guidelines, and make all the required findings for the approval of the conditional use permit, and adopt the resolution approving the INI Ranch conditional use permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions. And I'd like to add that if there is something major with the delineation report, that it comes back to us.
Good. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? I will ask Laura for the question. Noah, go ahead. I didn't see your.
I just got it in late. I just wanted to kind of speak to the issue that has been raised by others. And I think I will join you. I mean, given the fact that I think this is a well-designed project with good professional consultants, and I do want to cite what Ms. Hall noted, which is that they're actually, upon approval, planning to put in a pond to catch rainwater to get off the well, you know, et cetera. I'm going to join the rest of my colleagues who can support this. But I did want to agree with you, Alan, that I have the highest respect for CDFW there, the agency that I also put the most faith in. But it would be, I think, appropriate for us to send a letter that says, just like, like you said, I just want to second your suggestion and let them know that, that for anybody else, we wouldn't take public comment two hours before the meeting. But of course, we, we always want to consider their, their input. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Anything else? Thomas, do you have your hand back up? Go ahead.
Just a clarification on the added condition of approval. Is that the language that was in that email thread? Or is that different language as far as the wetland delineation? I just wanted to clarify that.
I'll let the director answer that question.
The way I understood the recommended condition by Commissioner Newman was that if a wetland delineation finds that there are wetlands that result in a significant change to the project, that it would result in a requirement to come back to the planning commission versus what the CDFW had asked for, that they were asking for the county to ask for the wetland delineation. The difference is, is the presumption that CDFW was already asking for the wetland delineation to be done as part of their LSAA agreement.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I can support that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Your hand is up, Noah, but I believe that's from before.
That is from before, and I will.
Thank you. I thought you may have another question. But so with that, I will call for the question, Laura.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy? Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Tom Mitchell?
No.
No. And McGaver?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. The motion carries five one. Right. So moving on, yes, Director.
I just did want to slide through. I heard both you and Commissioner Levy ask for a letter to be sent. Is that a formal action by the planning commission?
I would, I would agree with it as well.
I'm in favor.
I was under the interpretation, that was part of the motion, part of approving this project, was sending a letter. That was my interpretation. I apologize if I was wrong.
I wasn't thinking of it as part of, of the motion that was made on this project, but I, I was feeling like we were just giving you direction to do it. If you would like us to have a formal vote.
No, thank you for that. So one of the things that as staff we can't do is take direction from a single planning commission.
Yes, you're right. I didn't even think of it that way. So thank you, Director. So would somebody like to make a motion that we could send a letter to CDFW and ask them to get their referrals in on a timely basis, so that the planning commission has everything before our meeting?
I could do that.
Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll motion that.
Second that.
Oh, I haven't finished yet.
Poor Melanie. I'm sorry.
It's fine. I'll motion that the planning commission request to the director that we send a letter to this CDFW requesting that letters to us regarding projects that are tabled, you know, for the, for the next meeting, be received within the acceptable timeframe that is given to everyone else. So, you know, I don't know if we want to discuss how long that can be, because we all consider them a little more special. But I think the usual timeframe would be a week, so we could just put that down. I think that's all.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I would second that, and I apologize for cutting you off. I didn't realize you were going to go into detail, and that's my apologies.
No problem.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about the motion? Okay, so I will ask Laura for the question.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
McGaver?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. The motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Director, for pointing that out. That was good. All right. So that brings us to the next item, which was item number three on the consent, the Crossland Management LLC Conditional Use Permit, 1910 Gordon Road, Mealan Lone Star Junction area. So I'd ask for a staff report on that.
This was the one I just had a quick question on, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I noticed this, this is planned for a continuance, so I wouldn't normally ask questions on a continuance. But since there wasn't any of this, like, the reports available, a question arose for me based just on the, what was in the agenda. And so I guess I wanted to ask the question to staff, is the fact that they're planning on housing all of the workers on site, somehow mitigating traffic impacts of the project? And if so, do we adequately have conditions of approval that, that plans for those employees' trips to town, and that were enforcing that those employees do in fact live on the site? That's what came up for me. Thank you.
Director, would you like to?
So if, if it would be acceptable to the commission, it's really pretty irregular to start talking about a project that's being continued. But Commissioner Mitchell's question, we do have noted that we will make sure that we address that adequately, if that would be acceptable.
All right. So we'll bring that, he'll come back with an answer to that at the next meeting, or with the meeting it's continued to. So do we have a date that you wanted to, to the March?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we continue it to March 18th.
Right, so there we have it. Who was the second on that? So Laura? Okay, Mike was the, was the, thank you. It's hard for her to hear, so she asked me to give her clarification each time. I wasn't even sure that time. So we have a motion and a second to continue this to the March 18th meeting. Any discussion on that? Seeing none? I will ask Laura for the question, please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Peggy, oh, sorry. Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Melanie McGaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. So that brings us on to item G, which is continued items from last meeting. And the first one is Simply Humboldt LLC Conditional Use Permit and Zoning Clearance Certificate at 37577 Matol Road, Petrolia, California. So we have staff report, please.
Yes, one moment. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cade McNamara, and I will be presenting this project on behalf of the Humboldt County Planning Department. Simply Humboldt LLC is applying for a conditional use permit and a zoning clearance certificate to be located on APN 104321010 within the Southern Petrolia area. Here we have a proximity map showing the approximate location of the project proposal. The applicant's parcel is 18 acres in size, zoned unclassified with a land use designation of residential agriculture. Access to this parcel is off of Matol Road, highlighted above for your convenience. Simply Humboldt is seeking 37,000 square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation. Simply Humboldt is also seeking 20,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation through the retirement, restoration, and relocation program to an environmentally superior location. The relocation of this cultivation is from a timberland production parcel, APN 104131016, and will reduce impact on Mill Creek and the Lower Matol. Water storage for the project will consist of a proposed 1 million gallon upstream rainwater catchment pond to be developed by an engineer, and the applicant plans to phase in an additional 50,000 gallons of hard tank storage. Current annual water usage is estimated at 423,680 gallons, or 7.43 gallons per square foot per year. Power is sourced from PG&E. Processing will occur on site within a proposed 7,200 square foot ADA compliant facility. The applicant estimates 15 employees to be utilized during the peak of season. Here you will find a snippet of the site plan for the proposed 57,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation. Cultivation area is highlighted in yellow. 6,000 square feet of propagation area is highlighted in green, and water sources are highlighted in blue. Please note that the stars located on the left-hand side are the locations of the existing permitted groundwater wells. All proposed cultivation will occur within a single consolidated area within the center of this parcel. This was deemed environmentally superior. Natural Resources Management staff biologist assessed the area on February 1st of this year, conducting a waters investigation report, and did not identify any hydrophytic vegetation or hydric soil indicators within the project's proposed relocation area. All cultivation areas located outside of the centralized location will be decommissioned and appropriately remediated. NRM has also included a wet areas and streamside management area delineation on the site plan to illustrate and ensure that the proposal will fall outside of the appropriate setbacks within the CMMLUO for pre-existing cannabis cultivation. This project was previously pushed from the agenda for February 4th of last month. Comment primarily discusses issues for water sourcing and wealth and water quality of downhill residents. Both wells feeding cultivation are permitted and are screened at a depth of 80 to 140 feet, and are located over 1,500 feet from both Matol River and Squaw Creek. A water resource protection plan was executed by a licensed geologist from staff at Pacific Watershed Associates, identifying geomorphic and hydraulic features and stability, as well as erosion and potential water quality threats. A waters investigation report executed by Natural Resources Management staff identified a class three stream near the proximity of a now decommissioned cultivation site. This does not impact the proposal. A wet areas delineation was also executed during this investigation. Staff has agreed that there is no need for an EIR, as mentioned in public comment. Planning staff has determined that Simply Humboldt's project proposal for 57,000 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation is consistent with the mitigated negative declaration adopted by the CMMLUO per section 15164 of SEQUA guidelines, and have made all of the required land use findings for the approval of the conditional use permit and zoning clearance certificate. Our recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit and zoning clearance certificate, subject to conditions of approval written within the published staff report. Thank you for your time. I now turn my time back over to the planning commission.
Any questions for staff? Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. I will now open this up for public comment. And is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Give it a second. I'm not seeing any hands go up. There's lots of public there, but they must be for another project. Okay. There went one, but it's, okay. I know it's coming and going. I'll give it a second. Please put your hand up if you would like to be recognized. Okay. Public 7108, go ahead. Unmute yourself. R6. There we go.
Hi, I just, Bonnie Blackberry here. Wanted to make a comment about concerns about the well water use, and the permits coming through, every one of them is attached to a well. And it's something that I think is really serious that the county isn't looking at. And I don't know exactly what a well investigation report would tell you, but we're in a drought. We've been in a drought. It's a super serious issue. And the, all of these permits are going through with wells without the planning department or somebody having a database to see where all of these wells are, and how much they're drawing, and how much, if anybody's forbearing. So I think that's a big concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. The next public is B. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Is that me?
Yes.
Is it me?
Go ahead. It is you.
Me on the phone?
Whoever B is, is the next person to speak. You there still?
No, Linda. Is that me? I'm sorry.
It's somebody.
Is it a male voice or a female voice?
Well, I'm. Go ahead and speak if you speak. Otherwise, I'm going to close the public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes. All right. We're not, something isn't, isn't working here. So is there any other public that would like to speak tonight? Public 7429, go ahead. Star six, unmute yourself. I'll be back. Oh, B's back. Seven-four-two-nine, I mean, I may have said six.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to comment on this plan. It, it does concern me that the wells have not been proven to be not connected hydrogeologically. And it doesn't make sense to think that they wouldn't be somehow connected to the watershed that they sit within. I think that the land here in the Matol and in Humboldt County in general needs a little bit more study than has been given on all of these different plans where you're depending on wells for the water. So I think it, it needs just more analysis. And it's also unclear from the application what the actual water needs are because it's unclear how many cycles of harvest are planned and what type of cultivation is being planned. In the presentation by the planner, he used outdoor, but in the plan it says outdoor mixed light, outdoor mixed light. It goes back and forth. Also, it does look like on the ground, when you're on the ground, that wetlands are impacted. There's a road, the access road, where there's a lot of water on it often in the winter. It's a, it's an area that needs a little bit more on-the-ground analysis before anything is permitted. But my overall concern is that I, I think your commission might be proceeding a little too quickly with the staff not being able to gather enough of the required documents. I, I understand you have a backlog and, but I don't think you should rush. I think this is too serious. And I have another concern that I think permitting large industrial grows, and I think fifty-seven thousand is large. I think permitting that out in a very rural area impacts the neighborhood and it really impacts and puts too much pressure on our local volunteer first responders who will respond to medical and fire both. Being in the SRA zone does not leave everybody off the hook. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is B once again. Go ahead. Star-six, unmute. Are you there, B?
What are you doing? Hello?
Yes, welcome.
Hi. Sorry, we, we have a phone and a Zoom computer and we're not quite sure what's happening. So, I guess I'll start by saying that we were surprised to see the county's very limited response to our February comments referencing all the underlying documentation in regards to this project. The county corrected parts of the project description and parts of the staff report, but never fully reviewed our reporting of inaccuracies, omissions, or clarifications relating to the property and premises diagram, the cultivation and operations plan, Department of Environmental Health, the Water Resources Protection Plan, and our concerns regarding lack of SRA language. Nor did the county provide much of a response to our February MND concerns. The MND has not provided revisions in the project plans to avoid or mitigate impacts to a point where no significant impacts will occur. We still contend that the MND contains deficient analysis and is incomplete and/or inadequate due to SEQA finding two and SEQA finding six, lack of protection of downstream water supply. Considering that these documents are the baseline documents for which a SEQA determination is made and these underlying documents are what the planning commission reviews for project approval and from which the county oversees the project and enforces land use ordinance rules, this is a very serious matter. How does the commission know what they're approving if the problems with the underlying documentation makes unclear the full scope of the project? The scope of the project is contradictorily defined in the project description, the mapping, and the cultivation and operations plan. The property and premises diagram states all on-property cultivation is outdoor, no lights are used, and there's no changing of the natural light cycle. The cultivation and operations plan mentions a two-cycle harvest when estimating water use. The county's project description describes the cultivation as outdoor. Is this a mixed light project? Is there more than one growing cycle? There are fifty-seven thousand square feet of greenhouses totaling one point three acres. The scope of the project determines water estimates also contradictorily found in both the cultivation and operation plan, emails between the planner and the applicant, and the project description. These estimates vary widely from four hundred and twenty-three thousand gallons to over nine hundred thousand gallons.
You have thirty seconds, ma'am.
We have conservatively estimated the water use will exceed one million gallons annually. In our February and March comments, we spelled out in detail all our concerns with the underlying documents. The premises and property diagram mapping continues to be deficient. The latest project description now adds fifty thousand gallons of water storage. Additionally, an existing processing facility is not mapped. While we support the construction of a rainwater catchment pond and the addition of fifty thousand gallons of hard-
Please wrap it up.
I am. We continue to be confused and concerned about the water source for filling these tanks, when and how tanks are filled, their locations, their availability to firefighters, and to be used for what purposes. Will there be enough rain to fill the pond and ultimately is there enough water on this property for this size operation? The WRPP, section four point oh, standard conditions number five, water and storage use spells out in detail forbearance and storage measures, water meeting, water logs, reporting requirements.
Please wrap it up, ma'am.
I will, and even conditions that need-
I've asked you three times now, so I'm going to cut you off in a second.
We are requesting the alternative provided for by the county in the documents provided be adopted by the commission at tonight's meeting. A two-month time period should allow for enough time for planning staff to get all the underlying project documents updated and accurate and for the county to conduct more thorough scientific and environmental review as required. I didn't even get into my comments specifically about the water, but they're in our thirteen pages of comments we submitted in March and I hope the commission had time to read them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public that would like to speak? I know it seems strange to cut her off when there's no other people lined up, but I'm trying to be fair to everybody. And if I give more to one, then I'll hear about it. So, I'm trying to keep it consistent. So is there any other public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. Is there anybody who has a thought on this or any questions? Go ahead, Noah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it's kind of an open-ended question or comment. This is an unusually bailed letter. I, I had a chance to read both, both of the letters from the, the public speaker. And I guess I wanted to, and I, I understand that, that it was this neighbor's comments that caused the delay for one month. And that we did get a waters report, an investigation of standing water or surface water from the consultant NRM. As far as I can tell, there's no change to the project description, no additional conditions or, or mitigations that, that resulted from that. And I just wanted to put it to, to Cade or to Director Ford. Was there more perhaps in this letter that, that you found? Were there any other changes that were made? Or are there other concerns that were raised by this letter by the neighbor that you do not feel you have had a chance to investigate or address?
I'm happy to respond to that. So, regarding monitoring and reporting, these are a condition of approval that was written in. They are set to monitor and report weekly. As regarding storage onsite, updated water storage was written onto the site plan as well as a wet areas and streamside management delineation from NRM that was updated onto the site plan. The water report that was, investigation report was done on February first and it was done during one of our largest storms of the year. They did take soil samples at a depth of seventeen inches and no hydroic soils were identified. Lastly, regarding cultivation, this is an outdoor cultivation project. They are utilizing light deprivation cultivation techniques, which does not use artificial lighting. And the wells that are being discussed are over two hundred and fifty feet from the nearest class-three, which is an intermittent stream. Well depths, the screening is at eighty to a hundred and forty feet. And Natural Resources Management has done a good job in identifying both streamside management areas. As we discussed, there was a new one that was identified in the left, the left-hand side of the parcel on the parcel map. But that does not impact this, this project. Regarding other comments, I find that they are more a statement contesting formal review of cannabis project, projects, excuse me, and they aren't necessarily contesting this specific project. The staff does not find that an environmental, environmental impact report is needed. I'll have Director Ford address additional comments.
Thank you.
Director Ford?
Don't know that there's additional comments that I would address, but I think that was pretty thorough.
Alright. Did that answer your questions, Noah?
It, it did. Thanks for the thorough answer, Mr. McNamara.
Thank you. I see Thomas has his hand up. Go ahead, Thomas.
So this was the first project as the planning commissioner I ever read through. And the first thing I noticed was lots of water in the pictures. I'm talking when this was originally up, when it was continued. And from everything I saw, it seems like this site, I did not drive by it, but just from the pictures provided, it has a lot of drainage issues. And I'm, I have concerns as far as elevations and site flooding and potential other water courses. I noticed lots of un, or improperly, in my opinion, as a licensed contractor, maintained roads as far as there was, you know, dirt roads with ruts of mud. I can't remember which page it is. I wish I would have saved my original highlight and everything that I had all this. I just, I was concerned with the amount of water. I saw the lack of gravel on the roadways. And then the other concern, and I don't, I don't know the SEQA part yet, I'm learning that. I understand the existing part is thirty-seven thousand square feet. But is there anything that would trigger other environmental review to do the triple R of the additional twenty thousand square feet? And I don't know that my questions will be answered or not, but I'm having a hard time supporting adding the additional impact to the community that is having concerns via public comment because I don't know if that's something that would trigger when you bring cannabis from one location to, to another location. I don't know, I don't understand the EIR part enough yet if that triggers undue impact to a new neighborhood. So I'm, I'm new and I'm, I'm having a hard time with that part.
Thomas, Director, would you like to comment on that?
I can address water mentioned in the photos that you are referencing. These photos were taken during one of the largest storms of the year. And a lot of the photos where you find pooling are going to be within-
Yes, hold on a second, Cade. Go ahead, Thomas.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the wet weather reports. I'm talking about what was in the original staff report, not the February first rain. I'll flip through to find what I'm talking about.
Regardless, these photos are taken illustrating decommissioned areas. So you won't find that the actual consolidation of cannabis cultivation is underwater, though I do see your concern for the roadway being underwater.
Thank you, Cade. Did that help? Thomas? And then, Sean, you had your hand up and then you just took my hand. Okay. Thank you, Cade. Is there any other questions of Cade while he's up there? Any of the commissioners or any other points from commissioners? Noah, go ahead.
Yeah, it's kind of a generalized comment and it's actually going back to Bonnie Blackberry's comments, which I really, I share her concern. I mean, this is not a, I, I noticed that all of the projects on the agenda tonight, I believe, depend on well water. Although it's true that at least a couple of them are awaiting approval of the project at the county level so that they can go ahead with further proposed actions, including the installation of rainwater catchment. All that said, I basically just wanted to say that I too feel that it, we have a reckoning to do as a county. CDFW is pushing apparently for us to take a different look at, at wells than we have been. And I, I am not about to take it out on the present applicant who I think has done everything that's been asked of them and it seems like a good project. But I'm, I'm concerned about the number of projects that are coming forward depending on wells. I think if we, I, I don't know quite what action, I'm, I'm not asking for an action, but I'm, I'm, I think that we need to address this at a more systematic level rather than on a project-by-project basis.
Thank you. Thank you, Noah. Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
So, I, my concerns are in page forty-one. And I circled, it shows roadways and it says corner of cannabis relocation site, numerous photos. I see setting water and me personally, I can't support that. I could support the existing cultivation because that's in the original SEQA documents. I cannot support a triple R and that's from what I saw in the photos. And this, this was the first project I opened and I was like, oh my gosh.
Thank you, Thomas. Not seeing any other hands, I'd like to make a comment. I, I concur with most of what Noah just had to say. I, I also have been feeling like the well issue is becoming a common thread through all these projects. I just wonder if, it, it sounds like CDS kind of pointing at county to do it and I think the county feels like that's a CDF issue. It seems to me that a water, CDF is more prepared or staffed or versed in being able to do that kind of work than, than the county is. So maybe that's a question that also needs to be asked to CDF. If they have such concerns in this, how can they aren't evaluating this? Maybe their take on it is that you have to go out and you have to get an independent person. I'm not really sure exactly, but Director, do you have any thoughts on that? It just seems like we just keep coming up against this.
I, I, I would say that they are raising the concern for fear that if groundwater is connected to the biosphere, connected to the plant life that exists, connected to other things that are going on, then lowering of the groundwater table will have an effect on wild plant and wildlife. That is their concern. They're, they're not hydrogeologists, they're not geologists. They're, they're not the people to make that call. They are raising the issue for concern of what it may mean to wetlands, what it may mean to riparian areas, what it may mean to, to the, as I mentioned, the plant and wildlife within Humboldt County. I think unfortunately, if this is a concern, it's going to have to be addressed by the county because we are the ones who are, are permitting land use. because we are the ones who are, are permitting land use. That is, we are the lead agency there. And if there's a significant adverse environmental effect from use of groundwater, then it is going to be up to the county to address that. So if the commission wants to have a separate item on that, probably put a separate discussion on the planning commission agenda to have that discussion. That would be appropriate to, to discuss. But I, I do agree with Commissioner Levy that it would not be appropriate to try to make that policy decision within the context of, of an application.
I, I fully agree. I probably was going off into the bushes kind of on, on this, but it just seems like it's something that just keeps coming back up. And I don't know, I see Fish and Game is having a tremendous amount of staff. And I know they have a tremendous workload as well, but I just, it seems that they would be more adept, adept to tackle this than the county would be. So that was just my thoughts on that. So I, I don't want to push for anything more. They, I think I know where it would go anyhow. So maybe we do need to look at this down at some point. But I, we should stay on this project, and I apologize for getting off on a tangent. Thomas, I see you have your hand up. Thank you, Director. Go ahead, Thomas.
So as someone that followed the commission as a hobby, this seemed, the wells thing seems like the new generator. It's the new hot button issue. I think there's, the environmental side got some traction on the generator use and phasing those out, and now I think they're going, this is just my own personal perception. But my, I, I would agree with Noah not trying to make this applicant to tie it back into the agenda item, example of some new policy. But also, I, I would think that there, look at carrots, not sticks. There are some people that self-impose additional water storage as budgetary constraints allow. So I look forward to whenever we actually get to have that other conversation.
Thank you, Thomas. Noah, I see you have your hand up. Your volume, Noah, muted.
Sorry. I didn't see anybody else, so I just thought I would, I would follow up. I, I appreciate what I heard Director Ford say, that I think we all agree we don't want to discuss, much less develop new policies on, on the basis of a single application. But I think Director Ford was saying it, it, it could be appropriate to have an agendized item to discuss this issue. There's, I, I think we, you know, discussed the issue of wells, CDFW review, and associated issues. We've, we've certainly had, I think, a fair amount of public interest in the issue. So I think we get some, some folks following that discussion. That's all I got for now.
We're kind of, once again, we're going off on a tangent, so let's try and stay on this project. It's good input, but let's, let's try and get through this project. So what's the feeling of the mission on this one? Ready, willing to make a motion?
I would be, but I don't have the right page in front of me, so just give me one moment.
Can I go ahead and make a comment while you're looking for that page?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I just wanted to bring up the fact that a lot of these items we discussed back when we updated our ordinance to version two point O and the environmental review that went along with that. I definitely remember bringing up concerns about the fact that most of the pre-existing cultivation didn't really ever undergo environmental review. But that's already sort of said and done. At this point, I don't know exactly what we're asking for other than a study session to understand what the rules say. Because if we've gone ahead and written our rulebook and applicants are coming forward fully meeting all the rules, it's definitely not appropriate for us to move the goalpost on them at this stage in the game. And I don't know that we're interested in updating to a version three point O. So generators and wells are all covered in great detail in version two point O. And so short of just having a study session for the commission to understand and refresh their understanding of what those rules are, I'm not really sure what exactly is being asked. Thank you.
Brian. So Noah, you come back to you. You had the floor before Brian.
Oh, oh, did I? Okay, sure. This was, yeah. I, I will return to the item and move that. The commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance, CCMLUO, as described by section fifteen one six four of the CEQA guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the simply Humboldt LLC conditional use permit and the resolution approving the zoning clearance certificate as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Noah. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I will. Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
There was a lot of people at the same time. I'm not sure who was first. I think it was Brian Mitchell, so we're going to go with that. All right. So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none.
I just, I'm just going to throw it up, Chair. As I stated earlier, that I don't feel my concerns that I see in, in page forty-one that have been addressed, so I cannot support the motion, just throwing it out there.
Can you explain in a little bit more detail what you're referring to in page forty-one? Please?
Through the chair, there, the relocation site. It, from what I see, this isn't taken during the February first. You can see all this water on the roads and water at the corners of the proposed relocation cultivation area. And this was the same document that was provided in our original staff report. So it was taken before that February first time. So I feel that there's possibly a potentially a drainage issue there. So that's with my background as a licensed general engineering contractor, I, it raised a red flag, and that's what is a concern to me. And I did not ever have free time to drive all the way out to petroleum. So that's kind of where I'm at. But I, I'm the outlier, and I'm fine with that. I, on other boards I've sat on, I've been outlier, so I'm good with that.
Thank you, Thomas. Cliff, and go ahead, Cliff, you had your hand up first, and then Noah had his hand up.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I, I, I just wanted to direct Commissioner Mulder's attention. And, you know, perhaps you've already looked at this, but page thirty-nine of the staff report also has, shows where those pictures are taken. And so I, I believe you're talking about picture number seven. And you, what you'll see is that that's in the, I'd say it's really the southeast portion of the property. When you look at this aerial image on page thirty-nine, the actual relocation site is that field that's going to be to the northwest. And so I, I believe that it may be referring to this being located closer to the remediation site. That may be a typo, but I just kind of wanted to point out for your attention that it is showing the location on the property on page thirty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Noah, you did have your hand up, and then it just, there it is.
I did, because I, I didn't, you know, as the maker of the motion, I certainly didn't mean to proceed without airing out, especially because we're on our last item tonight, I believe, so.
No, we have one more.
Oh, we do have one more. Okay. Well, nevertheless, I didn't want to rush to a vote before having an adequate discussion of Commissioner Mulder's point. And, and I've now looked at the pages, photos, and questions. So I wanted to ask Commissioner Mulder directly, is there a, an additional condition? Or what other modification might we make to this that would allow you?
So thank you to staff, are we supposed to call you by your name, your first name, last name? I don't know how that, but Cliff, Mr. Johnson, for pointing me to that aerial. But number five is the one that caught my attention the most. And that seems to be from the aerial imagery, it seems to be right next to the proposed cultivation areas. I mean, the very minimum would be nice, I mean, that's, that's going to be an area that's going, if you look at picture five on page forty-one, that's going to be an area that's going to be heavily traveled, one would guess with greenhouses right next to it. So you would, at minimum, I think, would want to see some sort of surface control and drainage features there to get the, the water away from being sitting on the roadway and not within the cultivation area.
Director, do you want?
Sure. If, if I could, would it benefit this project, Commissioner Mulder, to have a condition requiring just that, that prior to erection of any greenhouses or conducting any cultivation, that a drainage and drainage plan shall be approved by the planning and building department and implemented, which directs drainage away from the cultivation area and directs it into an appropriate relief area so as to not pond within areas that are being used for cultivation or on the river.
Would that be okay with you?
Yeah, through the chair, that would take care of all the concerns. And also that would take care of probably half of the public comment concerns that I had read as far as drainage. And so, yeah, I, if you added that, I'd jump on board.
Would the maker of the motion be okay with that, Noah?
I, I certainly would be okay with that. Thank you, Director Ford.
As would I.
Right. So any more discussion on that issue? So we have a motion, and we have a second with a, a condition added to the end. And is there any more discussion on that? Seeing none, I will ask Laura to ask the question.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
One more.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Yeah. Motion carried six oh. Thank you. So here's that, and that brings us to item eight is public hearing. Am I missing something? There's one.
Well, item eight, there is public hearings, and then item number one wins or is back. Subdivision, the agenda shows that it's been continued to a date on.
Okay, so we don't need to, it's already been continued. Yeah, okay. I got it. I was missing that. Thank you. So this is actually a refreshing psych. We got through everything before nine o'clock. Good job, guys.
Yeah.
All right.
What was that, Noah?
I said it must be because we have Brian back.
Yeah, that's it. Welcome back, Brian. Good job. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to address before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, real quick?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a point to staff that my understanding is that we're only going to have a potentially very controversial project on our agenda at the next meeting. And I would ask that the staff planner reach out to me with regard to that project. I reached out to the consultant that was listed for the applicant. And I'm talking about the Sun Valley Bulb Farm project. And I have not, it's been five days, and I have not received word back from the applicant directly. So if I could have a staff member reach out to me, I'd like to facilitate a tour of the facility.
We will do that.
That's it. Thank you.
Would any of the other commissioners like to see this facility?
I would very much like to. Yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're not going to be able to do it all at the same time, because that would be a. So we will see what we can do to sequence a, a couple of tours of the site.
Thank you, Director. That's a good idea. Thank you, Brian. That's a great idea.
I'd like to bring up one item, our ad hoc committee for road improvements to help try and figure out how we can get some low-income housing, how we can do that by cutting road costs down. We met for the first time yesterday, had a, I thought, a, a good meeting, talked about a few things, and got some ideas. I think next, I can't remember the date, we decided, we were trying for once a week. So we'll be meeting again, and hopefully in the near future, be bringing some thoughts back to the commission to be discussed. That's really about all I can say, Noah, and Melanie were part of that. You guys have any thoughts on it?
I, I was just gonna, just for the record, state that the, some, some invitations went out to developers, including Kevin McKinney. He declined. So in the end, we met just as Chair Bongio, myself, and Commissioner McAver, plus Alan Fisk of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, and Bob Bronckel. Just wanted to get that into the record, that that's who this committee consists of, and that we were looking at doing maybe a couple more meetings, but trying to wrap up a set of recommendations in fairly short order to bring back to the commission.
Yes, it went very well. We had a very good first meeting. We planned to meet four times, and then if needed, we'll bring our ideas to some additional developers, because of course, our chair serves that role in his private life. And yeah, so we're looking forward to bringing that information back in the next coming weeks.
Thank you. Any other comments or anything? Seeing none, I will call this meeting adjourned and see you all in two weeks. All right. Good night, everyone.
Night.
Night.
Night.